You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Organization?
Yeah, just motions. I've got a special meeting members to announce the organization.
This year we're going to be running the, uh, myself as chair, Bill will be vice chair, and Jimmy will be secretary of board. Representatives of the planning board will be mind pending this month. Jimmy's gonna start April?
No.
No, Bill? Sorry.
Too soon for me.
April, May, June, July? You've got August, September. And then on December, March again.
Merry Christmas.
Capital approval committee will be known again. And I'll be on the economic development advisory committee. Consideration of meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion for the March 12th, special meeting.
Second. Any errors or corrections necessary? Not all in favor say aye.
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 May abstain. So I wasn't there.
You were there, it was unofficial.
I wasn't official, right? So I'll make a motion in the regular meeting on March 6th.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 I'll abstain. Non-public, I'll make a motion, non-public meeting on March 6th.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second. Anything further, Michael? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Garrett, my, uh, microphone keeps going off. Thank you. Public input. Anything for the good of the order?
Just here, I guess. March Laura wants to do notes on Zoom.
Oh, great. Hopefully we're on Zoom. Appointments, we got Conservation Commission Chair Sherry Dama, Ashwilett River Park stabilization project.
We have the guest chair for you right there.
So I'm Sherry.
Hi, Sherry.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Sherry.
I, um, I have some bullet points for y'all because this is kind of a complex thing. I know I won't describe it all completely, so. This goes over, um, this is from Lauren Zelinski from the Connecticut River Conservancy. And she goes over what the project is. If you wanted to take a minute and look at that, we could, um. And then the last bullet point is basically what she's asking for from the town. So I'll just give you a minute to look at that. And if you have any questions, let me know. And on the reverse is a diagram from their engineer.
The last time you were here and brought this up. I don't know if maybe we were under the assumption that you were looking to replant some trees, but it looks like you're gonna create some log jams, man-made log jams that'll protect the bank.
Right, so the Connecticut River Conservancy is heading up the whole project. They'll be hiring somebody to come in and, um, they'll be, they're looking for trees, which is part of their request is that maybe the town can help come up with some trees during another project. And they're going to sort of jam those trees with the root balls into the banks and create sort of a terrorist bank as well along the campground as well as we're looking. The reason we're here is we're looking to do it on the town property too, at the muster field. So it'll create more of a terrorist situation, allow the river to rise and spread out a little bit, but also hold the soil in place with the root balls. And also they'll be planting vegetation on those terraces too. And hopefully that'll have some time to take root, so.
Does it matter if you have to bring material running in the soil? Because you're gonna fight soil with these plants, but it looks like it's all sandy bank.
Right, the problem right now is it's just a sheer sandy bank. And every time the, every time there's a storm and the river rises, it just washes out more sand. So the idea is they're gonna create a whole new bank system. And some of this will be, um, soil like inside of, um, and I'm not gonna describe it exactly because I'm not an engineer, but they'll have it sort of encapsulated in fabric. So it's not gonna just get washed away. There'll be plantings on it.
Time period before this settles in.
Right.
If we have a flood early, it's gonna take us out.
Well, I, I think it's designed to withstand that. So there'll be some fabric, some soil inside the fabric. And then there'll be stuff that's planted in amongst it as well as to hold it in until the stuff takes hold will be these root balls. And they're, they've already collected a whole bunch of stumps over there that you've probably seen piled on the campground property if you've been over there. They'll be using some of those too in amongst what's there just so that it doesn't all get wiped away by the next flood.
The root balls are gonna be attached to 20 to 30 feet worth of tree.
Yeah.
So it's not just stumps like they were doing before. They're looking for 30 feet of tree with the roots. So it would be, it would be, you know, almost like a normal retention wall. How you would, you would put your timber down and you put something going to the bank. Timber down, something going to the bank. So that's what they're trying to do, just that 30 feet of tree go into the bank. And what the gentleman said, which was kind of interesting was if it works right, it'll look natural, look accidental, it won't look like it's been engineered. It won't be neat, it won't be pretty. It's supposed to be a mess. It's, they're trying to recreate a log dam.
Yeah, and there will be rocks in there holding those things in place too.
When we're popping, we find trees in Swansea that we can transplant to that particular place?
Um, not so much transplant as, um, so we can, they can be stored on the campground property until such time as they're gonna do the project. But, um, yeah, so if something's getting cut down, instead of being cut down, it just needs to be pushed over with a bulldozer. So you've got a root ball attached and somehow haul and store it for a while.
Should we refer this to Joe and let him coordinate with the property units and DBW? Is he probably clear?
Well, I think, so I think that's partly where it started was discussing with them. I just, they're looking at three to five years down the road. I just think the timing might not align.
Yeah, and hardwoods are gonna be best ideal. I mean, if all we get is prines, that's all we get. But I think hardwoods are gonna be best because they're gonna hold up a lot longer than some structural pine trees.
Kind of think that's a significant area of time.
On that lot, yeah.
So you're looking at three to five years down the road. You don't want us to start storing and, uh?
If something happens now, it's a, and it's a, it's a tree or something, it'll probably sort fine. I think right now what especially they're looking for is just A, permission to do this on the town property from the town. B, they're, they're looking for some letters of support. So I know our, actually given the letters of support, they want that from the Conservation Commission. And then, you know, they're not asking us for money, but if we find some money, they'll take it, or if we know about grants that come up that they might be able to pursue. And then the trees.
Any restrictions on the muster field property?
I don't think anyone would prevent us from trying to save it from washing down. Nothing I'm aware of, I'm gonna make sure of that.
Is that one of your side? Is that the section you're talking about, the one?
No.
Talking here?
Yeah, the top.
And that's Swansea on the side. And the campground on this side. What about in here?
That's the recycle center.
Oh, the recycle center.
Yeah, so there's a couple of locations, I believe, on town and that could be candidates for this right there. And, you know, it's, it's just gonna help protect the neighbors. Keep things, keep things flowing a little more slowly. Keep from getting these sandbanks deposited.
You been out there, Mike?
Oh, yeah.
Anything you could do with the, uh, the old fire department access that puts slow things down?
Yeah, I mean, you're like Sherry said, we really, we really would like to have hardwoods. And we've got a little bit of time. I mean, you know, we own, we, we own a ton of land. I mean, even during the logging operation that we visited last year, if we had known that then, we could have probably tagged 10, 15 oats and had it pushed open in no time. So I think just keep our eyes open and look at our own, our own resources. I think we should be able to harvest even if we had to. And the next time somebody's building, you know, we can certainly approach them about it, but we gotta get permission from them that they want. They've already got a finished concrete, so they want more stuff. And basically moving to the rest of stuff, I believe that to other people. But I don't think there's any shortage or lack of opportunity to get trees when we would want to.
So is there a time again, Mike, that we have to do this in the fall to, to hold the growth of these trees?
That's up to the design guys, I'm not even into that. But yes, probably, I'm sure that's true.
Well, because it surprises me that we can take a big oak tree and transplant whatever down.
No, no, we're not trying to transplant it. We don't want a lot. We're gonna cut the top of the tree off. 20 feet of tree with a root ball. Not the tops, they stay.
I was like, this is gonna be.
That would be a challenge.
Yes, gotcha.
I think consensus should be fine at this point. What do you like, the three of us, okay with it?
I'm fine.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Code enforcement officer Michael Jasmine, Golden Pond Grange Improvement Project.
All right, so the Grange money passed one with the rest of the CIP and C stuff. So it's time to get on with bidding the roof. We want to do this in stage, we do the roof bid first, and then we'll see how that comes back. And then we'll worry about the windows and then trainings. Those are the three things that money was supposed to, supposed to buy. You guys have the area in front of you. The only thing about that that's not accurate that could have mine is the plan. And my plan right now is to put in a chimney. The reason I have a chimney on that building, when I can use it, it's in very poor condition, top to bottom. And it's gonna make roofing a lot easier, a lot less likely to leak in the future. And that's pretty much it, we're gonna send it up. Got a deadline, the 22nd, and the mandatory saving meeting, pretty much the way we always do them. We'll see what the numbers come back.
Do you know when that is?
The 22nd?
No. The sidewalk, the mandatory bar.
Whenever, I'm not, I'm not making it, um, I'm not setting a date. It's whenever they can do it, it's just a cross on off. And I'm really concerned about getting people to bid it as it is and a little limit in any way.
As it's convenient for them.
If it's convenient for them, I'll do the best I can to accommodate them.
Is there any reason we can't start earlier than seven for the work? If needed?
Probably not, I mean, if it was really needed. I mean, so, so you guys are kind of used to my mantra, Mr. Capasino. We got three components to the construction project. You got price, but you got quality, you got schedule, and you get two. So in this one, we're going for price and we're going for quality. I'm proposing to give in on schedule. And the reason is, is because we have it, we have the flexibility. We've got four or five days in here, they said that I don't want it to work. That's for their Bluegrass Festival, a couple days before, a couple days after. So I'm hoping that flexibility will allow someone to view this job in a bunch of different ways, not the leasing, which is just as an infill project. Pricing construction right now is harder than it's ever been for me. I'm still, been pretty successful as of late, and I'm really nervous about this. Because the, the largest growing cost in construction right now is a gallon of because I can't. And I don't know how much that actually costs. Right, materials are too labor, but some guys are just doing it because they can. So I don't know what it's gonna come back at. I wanna be right, I just wanna be right, but I could be way off.
Is that gonna be the motion for the two?
Consensus.
At the deliberative session, there were some gentlemen who stood up and said they would volunteer their construction crews to work on this project. And we talked about contacting that at all?
I'm pretty sure he got that. He didn't understand.
Okay.
He didn't understand.
I don't think he understood at that point, but I think he thought it was just putting shingles on the street.
And I think he almost signed up to whether we're gonna work on the fire section.
I worked with everybody.
The two projects kind of got homing in there and?
Yeah, I'm not kind of positive with everything, but I, I've worked with everybody quite a bit. I can send it to them, but, um.
No, I'm sorry, I?
It's, it's one of his grasp, whatever. Yeah, I too have grasped. I appreciate Sid Gaskin. Okay, thanks, guys.
I'm gonna jump ahead to our April meeting schedule. We're gonna jump ahead to item nine, consideration of new business. We have the April meeting schedule. Question about, what was it, the 22nd or something?
17.
17?
I know, at times we've tried to go with some of these regional, regional events. But I, the naplock, I come on my development preparation meeting, anything, anything to do with it. So just probably, I don't wanna skip that one for folks who might wanna go. And then, uh, I had meetings together, go on Wednesdays and, you know, or schedule for any.
Does that work for you? You got a name?
So you were saying we're gonna be on 4/3 and 4/10? And what that will be down in the key, we could go with that if you want it, right? And then you're gonna, that's the month of the week.
Does that work?
Yeah, until we, until we vote, that's consensus. I'm good with that.
And the other thing we've done in the past is take this show on the road. If we wanna do that in some of the warmer months. Something to think about. Yeah? There's lots of places, maybe the airport terminal, maybe, uh?
Richardson Park.
Richardson Park. Range Hall, they have the tent up. Yeah.
You ready to do that, starting tonight?
Uh, maybe after black fly season. All right, how about, uh, Stratton Free Library Expendable Trust Fund?
This has been a capital, uh, capital improvement plan for a few years. They're looking to do some digitization and I think update their, uh, their cataloging system.
It's not cheap. So are they gonna do it themselves? I see they got the blank barcodes. Or is this something that they're buying a couple thousand barcodes and they're sending them out? Thing I'm looking at is at page 48, I have a little description. Dump digitally composed barcodes. 21,000.
Yeah, I didn't have to.
Okay, I didn't know if you, I didn't know how much you dug into it. I don't.
I think it was a combination, they ran through some of that.
Two centers, good.
So we wanted to make a, I'd like to make a motion on that. It's outlined in the agenda here for the trust fund. Is that timed?
Got that, Beverly? Second. All right, motion made and seconded to authorize expenditure up to $12,473 from the Stratton Free Library Expendable Trust Fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Police Cruiser.
So also in the capital improvement plan is for a new cruiser this year. Chief, I included some information on that, so they found a 2023 GM Tahoe, uh, total cost.
All my mics are dead over here. Is that better, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Uh, I'm looking at a 2023 GM Tahoe for total cost without fitting of just over $58,000.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, accept the, um, money for the new cruiser. It's outlined here, are you done there?
Authorize the expenditure.
The what? As written.
Second. All right, we have a motion seconded to authorize the expenditure up to $60,000 from the Police Cruisers Capital Reserve Fund to purchase and outfit a new police cruiser. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. You can bring your mic over to Jimmy. All right, requested expenditure, 2024 reevaluation contract.
2024 is a revaluation year for Swansea, which means we're going to update all of our property values. Uh, last year we did what's called a full measure and list, which has the assessing contractor attempt to visit and inspect every property in town. Due to the cost and the feeling that our data is overall in pretty good shape, what we're proposing this year is what's called a statistical update, which means he inspects properties that have been improved, they have a building permit, or properties that have sold within the last roughly 18 months. He then takes that data, updates the metrics for the, uh, goes into the assessments, develops preliminary values. The letters get sent out to all property owners so they get an idea of the preliminary value. They would then have an opportunity to meet with the assessor, understand how that value is calculated, provide additional information. If they haven't been visited and they'd like to be visited, they can do that. So that's the, that's the general overview of what we're looking at. So we're looking at using Marazov, Marazov Assessing for that project this year.
So, so last year there was significant physical visitation of properties?
Based on improvements or studies.
But he physically went to multiple properties last year? Did I hear that correctly?
Last revaluation.
Oh, 2019?
Correct.
Okay, so this year it's, it's focusing on any, any properties that have pulled permit, building permits?
Or sales.
Right, or sales.
Correct.
In terms of physical visit?
Correct.
He's, he's actually gonna go out to the properties that transferred as well as building permits?
Correct.
So we'll get a pretty good cross-section from that? Great.
I'll make the motion that we accept it as written.
Second. All right, motion made and seconded to enter into a contract with Marazov Assessing and authorize the expenditure up to 105,000 from the revaluations and updates Expendable Trust Fund for a statistical evaluation of property. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Rules of procedure? Five minutes or less?
I think we can, they're pretty, they're pretty, uh, narrow, so to provide them to our, so I just pulled them up and happened to read through and just noticed a few, um, kind of inconsistencies. It talks about how regular meetings are at town hall, which obviously is not the case currently. Couple other just rewording and reorganization. I don't think they were too controversial. If you see other stuff in there that you'd like to update, we can do that too. Or we can put it on hold. I just figured while I was, while I was reading it, I would suggest some, um, updates, so.
I think they look good to me. The one thing I'd like to add is to our agenda. We, we typically allow or ask for public input at the end of the meeting.
Do you like to add that in at the end as well?
So we'd have two shots at it.
So early in the meeting and then at the end?
Yeah.
So it's the first by the apple and the last by the apple, right? Sounds good to me, I like that.
All right. Good job, Michael.
There were your job. As usual, all right?
So can Joe get his done in two minutes?
Think you can get your bridge?
It's a biggie, it's, uh? It's a big expenditure.
So recently, we updated the lights on the Saurus Crossing Bridge to, uh, to LEDs, but some complaints about the visibility. Started getting the same complaints over here on the Slate Bridge in Westport Village. Tenny Electric gave me a quote to replace the lights on that bridge with the same ones they did on Saurus Crossing, which are working really well at the, uh, $1,375. Then all the other bridges have modern lights, so they're, this would be the last one to bring up to date. What was, what was the complaint about shining in the light? No, they're just dark. Oh, they're not bright? Very dark, they're basically household bulbs that are up in there from what I can tell. So they're upgrading, the light out and on? Yeah, much brighter and then LED efficient, so. Um, it'd be the same thing that's over on the Saurus Crossing Bridge.
All right, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we upgrade the lights for Saurus Crossing Bridge?
Uh, Slate Bridge.
Slate Bridge. Up to 1,500.
All right, motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure of up to 1,500 from the Covered Bridges Capital Reserve Fund for lights at the Slate Covered Bridge on Westport Village Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you.
And then lastly, Cottle Hill Road project improvement. I mean, we've talked about it in the past here about widening the hill and paving it. Uh, we had a property owner that, that's not cooperating, but I think we're gonna do, looking to do in some surveying. And I think there's enough right of way up there to do the project. I think now would be a perfect time to do it. We had a pretty mild winter and we didn't use a fraction of our Saul budget, a real small portion of it. So I'd look to use some of the funds we saved there to complete the project. I estimate the project to be about $75,000, including gravel, paving, tree removal, and, uh, and the surveying. And between DVW's operating budget and then leftover from what we didn't spend on Saul, I think we can accomplish that.
And winter's not over yet.
No, tonight it may be coming, but, but we're still, we're still in real good shape. So without that, without those funds, we wouldn't be able to afford to do it this year, but I think we can.
But we still don't know because you don't know where the property lines are?
No, no, we're, we're still gonna be able to do it. The question is how far up we're gonna be able to go. Because the property owner that I initially was communicating with, he stopped communicating, won't even call me back. I had heard through a resident up there that he's not gonna give an easement, but in looking at the tax maps, it looks like the right of way through there is plenty wide enough. We're just gonna survey it to make sure, seeing he is not cooperating, survey it and make sure that we're not doing anything on his property. But regardless of that, we will still be able to pave that triple portion of the hill. The hill's really steep and it's gravel, it's problematic because cars going up it, tires bouncing, it gets a lot of potholes. So it would just be paving the first big gravel hill on that road and then doing some other gravel improvements to Cottle Hill Dirt itself.
Is it a mile, how long is it that we have to go?
We're looking at approximately 1,000 feet to a quarter mile of pavement. And then we'll do some other improvements to the rest of the gravel road.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call the public informational meeting to order for reconstruction of Upper Wilson Pond Dam on Swansea Factory Road. We have representatives here from Duboy and King, the engineers, and the construction company, Gordon Services. If you could, before you are recognized to ask your question, please identify yourself for the minute taker. Thank you.
Or just say? Like this? Uh, good evening, my name's Charles Johnston. I am the design engineer for the Upper Wilson Reconstruction Project. I'm here with Hannah Pisqual from my office, who's a junior engineer, as well as the team from Gordon Services, who is the contractor for the project. This meeting is to provide you some information about the background of the project and information about the construction that's gonna be occurring this summer. There is a handout that's going around, if you didn't get it, let us know. Hannah's got some extra copies. Um, I have an extra copy, I don't need that. The overview for this is we're gonna go over a little bit about what the dam is and why. Um, the overview for this is we're gonna go over a little bit about what the dam is and why we got to the place where we are now, um, and the process of, of alternative selection and design and funding for the project. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about what the construction project is and the sequence in which, uh, the contractor is expecting to complete the project. Uh, so first of all, uh, Upper Wilson Pond Dam is part of a larger system that goes down to Lower Wilson and then pass the airport back to the Ashwood. Um, Upper Wilson is a earthen embankment dam. It has a concrete spillway. It's located on Swansea Factory Road. The dam is approximately, uh, forty feet long for the earthen embankment portion, and then there is a earthen dike that actually occurs um, behind one of the, uh, structures that you can see in that image. Um, it's controlled by the concrete spillway. The primary deficiency with the dam is that it doesn't have hydraulic capacity to pass the design flood that New Hampshire DES has determined for this hazard classification of a dam. Um, in other words, when the hundred-year flood comes in, like we had this summer, it will potentially overtop, and that could lead to a failure of the dam. Because of the structures downstream of it, it's classified as a high hazard structure, so in an event that it was to fail, it could cause loss of human life. So it is required by New Hampshire Dam Safety to be reconstructed or removed. Uh, if you wanna go to the next slide. Uh, in twenty-seventeen, we started the process of rehabilitating the downstream dam, which is Lower Wilson Pond Dam. Um, and during the summer of twenty-eighteen, we did the construction project there. That structure is located along the, um, Route thirty-two by the airport. Um, and then COVID hit and we had a little break, uh, but then we came back and we started looking at Upper Wilson. And in twenty-twenty, we started an alternative analysis, and I came and presented those alternatives to the town. That included a dam removal option and then two different rehabilitation options. The, the one that was selected is the current one that we're designing, um, which is to remove the existing concrete structure and replace it with a similar concrete structure that has a longer hydraulic length and is able to actually pass flows more efficiently. That occurred throughout twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, um, and that alternative was selected. In the twenty-twenty-two time period, there was a bond vote to move forward with the design and, um, bidding. Um, after that bond vote, in September, yes, uh, the town put together a package. Um, New Hampshire DES received funds through the ARPA, um, Act, I think it's, it's an act from the federal government. Um, and they appropriated some of that funds to rehabilitation of high hazard dams, which Swansea received a million-dollar grant towards the project. Um, so there was a one-point-three-million-dollar bond vote and there's a one-million-dollar grant. Um, we went through the final design of the project, um, and were given permits earlier this year, or, sorry, in, uh, twenty-twenty-three. Um, and we put the project out to bid earlier this year, which, uh, Gordon Services had the lowest apparent bid, uh, of one-point-three-million dollars for the project. The project involves, uh, demolition of the existing concrete structure. We're gonna excavate, uh, outside of those limits to replace some of the soils and put in a mineral filter drain to pick up seepage or groundwater that's moving through the dam to make it more stable. There is a seven-foot diameter pen stock, because this used to be part of a hydro facility, um, that was abandoned in place. We're gonna remove that as it's a mechanism for failure. Uh, if water was to get in there and potentially leak out of it, um, it could erode the soil and you could get a breach through that section, so we're gonna remove that section out. We're gonna put in a sheet pile cutoff wall on the upstream side of the existing concrete wall that's gonna, portion of that's gonna remain. That'll help also reduce seepage through the embankment. And then, uh, along the top, we're going to regrade it, and we're going to put, uh, topsoil and make it similar to what it's now, which is a park setting. Um, the biggest difference is the dike or the extension of the earthen embankment that wraps around the pond behind the homes right now is wooded. That has to be, um, 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 cut, so there's no trees or shrubs within fifteen feet of the embankment, and it's gonna be all lawn, basically looking back there. Um, so that will be a large difference, I think, from the road if you were just driving by looking at it. Uh, I'm gonna have Hannah come up. We have a couple of plan sheets, and she's gonna just touch upon a few key components of the project on those plan sheets.
So this sheet right here is the existing condition site plan. So, um, in the center is the existing concrete spillway. Then to the left of it, there is the intake structure, uh, which leads to the seven-foot diameter pen stock. And then just left of that is the existing concrete retaining wall. Under normal conditions, um, Upper Wilson Pond is at four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-point-twenty-five feet. On the next slide, you'll notice that during construction, this will be lowered to four-hundred-and-ninety-four feet. The spillway, intake structure, and pen stock are crosshatched because these will be demolished. And then to the right, you'll also, um, notice that it's crosshatched as well 'cause the embank, the dike will be cleared of trees and shrubs at least fifteen feet from the toe of the dike. Um, on the next page, or on the next slide, is a close-up look at the proposed conditions. Uh, there will be riprap upstream and downstream of the spillway. The spillway looks a little different now. It's a labyrinth spillway. There's also to the right and left sheet pile cutoff walls, and then to the left is that, um, existing concrete wall that's to remain. So in the center is the, um, labyrinth spillway. To the right and left of the spillway are the sheet pile cutoff walls. And then to the left, just past the sheet pile cutoff walls, is the existing concrete retaining wall to remain. On the next slide are isometric views of the new spillway to be built. On the top, uh, you'll notice the water, um, this one shows upstream to downstream, the flow of water. And then the other one, the other, uh, spillway is, it's the same. It's just a different view. Um, it's going from, the water's going from bottom to, uh, top.
Yeah, so I just wanna touch upon this new structure, right? The existing structure, the water is maintained and it flows across a concrete slab and then drops off into the pool downstream of this. This one will be slightly different where the interior wall, the accordion wall, is maintaining the water level, and then you're gonna have a ten-foot drop. So it'll be even more of a waterfall effect that there was there before. That was kind of one of the key, um, public input that we got back is that the public likes to have a waterfall there. Um, so there'll be even bigger waterfall, I guess, than there was before. Um, in addition to that, there will be a new pond drain system that there isn't there currently, so there will be ability to draw this down in case there's an emergency event or a flood coming in, as well as there will be a tee on that system so that if the fire department does want to, they can draw water from this pond. I think there's already existing hydrant there that's attached to the town's water system. Um, but this is just an extra precaution if they need more water. Um, yeah, we'll go to the next slide. This is a little bit about the construction sequence. I don't know if, uh, you guys wanna talk about that? That's all right. I'll do it. Um, so the, the plan is, uh, in April and May, is to start to go out to the site and lay out the controls and start to cut down trees and prepare the site for construction. In late May, we're gonna, gonna start, um, digging up the pen stock and the old structure and demolishing it so that sometime in end of May and April, the site's prepared and ready to start putting together the forms, reinforcing in concrete for a pour sometime in July. Um, there's a little bit of a period after the concrete's been poured to let it cure, and then after that, there will be backfilling and final conditions will be set sometime in August, is my understanding. And I think that's the full construction schedule. Does anyone have any questions? Questions? Sorry.
When you show the diagram of all that angles, does the water go over the top of that and down?
Correct. Yeah, if you wanna go back to that sheet? Yes, um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna point to this one. So the water is sitting inside these, um, we call them, uh...
What direction is the water?
In this view, right, the water's gonna go over this wall and down in between these accordion walls, right? And you can see there's almost like a curvature to that wall right in here. That's what is helping facilitate the water from moving and makes it the weir more efficient, so it's a key component of the construction. There are ten feet, three inches on the interior, these walls, and then these walls will be slightly taller. If you're standing on the embankment right now, you look down and it's just a concrete slab and water's flowing over. We purposely slope the, um, embankment walls on the downstream side so that you could be standing on the embankment and looking across, and those accordion walls will actually extend out farther, and you'll actually be able to see the water falling in front of you. It'll be a pretty nice site amenity.
It's huge, great, but is there safety involved here? I mean, is, is there gonna be fencing around this? Is one of the child conductors falling in?
That was not included.
That was not included? There's no fence right now? Well, I mean, we're gonna have that exposed right off, and if somebody, mother watching their kids, a kid falls inside one of those trenches, one of those things, we don't have those safety cut off? I think that's a pretty big concern, no? Agreed.
If the town would like to add fences, they can, as...
How would we, could that possibly be done the, the way the design of the dam is?
Yeah, so i- if you, if you go around to some of the state dams, um, because they're not regularly, um, people don't regularly go to them, I guess, from the state, right? What they've done is they'll put like chain link fence along the, um, outside of the concrete so that people will have to purposely go around to get to them. Um, some other towns may put like a wooden guardrail or something like that. That's completely up to you if you wanna do that. Um, it, but that's a town liability issue if you want to do that.
That's gonna be on its own, you know, for the safety purposes?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we could talk to the contractor and have them add, but it has, it's not a part of the dam safety issue, right? It's a public safety issue.
Right, and I, I guess it should be noted that if they fall on this side of it... No, they're just gonna be in the, it's gonna be the pond.
Yeah, so, um...
So there's no fence...
Scroll down a little bit.
At the pond, you know?
Everything, everything from this point across will be water. So if they were to fall off the embankment this way, they'd fall into water and then they could be, they swam over, I guess they could fall ten feet. From this point on, they would fall in, the wall is around nine, down to about, um, three feet tall at the end here. It will be ten feet deep on this side of the, of the spillway, yes. Yes, we are digging down and creating a hole. The goal is that the pond drain will be used more regularly than, well, there wasn't one before, so it shouldn't silt in as long as you continue to use the pond drain, as well as the labyrinth has a system. The way the hydraulics work helps clear sediment out from the labyrinth during like flood events. Let's do the online one first and get that over with.
So will those recorded things, were they any period of cleaning of any, any dark?
They're gonna be concrete, um, so if they were to have vegetation growing on them or, you know, something that you think is unsightly, you could power wash them if you wanted to. Um, if debris gets caught on the top of the weir, it is part of the owner's operation and maintenance to go and clear that. So Joe's team would have to go out and go clear that off. Um, usually there isn't a lot of debris that catches on the stand because water that flows into it has to go through the diversion channel first, and that's usually where it's gonna get caught, or in the track, the trash rack that controls that system. Um, I don't think a lot of debris gets caught there currently. Um, most of it is somebody like, last year threw a table in there. Um, so hopefully that doesn't happen in the future, but...
Great. And another question is, um, you mentioned you're cutting down trees and maybe more, uh, grass approaching that body of water. And I'm really unsure, they, um, they would not prefer to see, you know, the strong zone, the shoreline, anything else to, um, kinda prevent, you know, things entering that body of water? So I'm not sure that's probably the, the, you would consider the best, uh, approach, um, to the water edge.
Yep, um, so this went through, uh, New Hampshire Dam Safety permitting as well as New Hampshire Wetland and Army Corps permitting. Um, because this is a dam safety issue, it trumps the requirements for the Shoreland, uh, Protection Act. Um, so we went through that process. It is a requirement for dam safety that it's cleared to the water's edge, to the top of the dam, and then on the downstream side of the embankment, um, to within fifteen feet of that embankment.
Was it, uh, what did you vote for?
Uh, the process that we went through is not. The dam safety program requires that to occur. Uh, question in the back?
Yeah, Derek, that's in Swansea. Uh, you said that this option was, uh, chosen or approved. Uh, what process would involve choosing or approving?
Yep, so we went through, uh, a period of information gathering. We went and did survey, we did updated hydrology and hydraulics, um, and we did some analysis. We presented, eh, I think it was four different options here at a select board meeting, um, initially, and then we did a secondary, um, uh, meeting, which the public was invited to, and we received, uh, input at those meetings. I'm not sure how much input we received, but then the select board, uh, made a decision, and we went forward with the rehabilitation option.
Yeah, the gentleman brought up a point or a question, I guess. Uh, as we're looking at this view here, the water is gonna be coming in from, as we're doing this hour, la, hour of right, correct? And then going over these V-shaped, uh, accordion, I guess, involved it?
Yep.
And actually to the left of the structure?
Yep. If you wanna scroll up to the next page, it might be easier to look at the site plan. So the pond sits up in this area, right? And it'll be flowing this way. We have a riprap channel that will be connecting with the riprap that was designed for the culvert, and it'll funnel through this and then down the rest of the stream back down to Lower Wilson.
So where is the, where is the riprap channel or culvert? Is it included in that accordion structure or is it below it?
The culvert through Swansea Factory Road currently exists, and it has...
That's kind of the, that's, that's downstream of the, of the dam itself?
Correct, yes.
So the gentleman brought up a point of, you know, debris and sticks and trees and logs and steam and soap and stuff is gonna start building up. You ever fill up all those, uh, all of those accordion B channels?
Yeah, so floating debris will get caught on the debris channels. It is the town's responsibility to remove that, that material, similar as it is today or another, any other option of the dam maintaining with this kind of structure. Um, silt, because dams allow water to calm, will deposit in that accordion channel. There is a pond drain located on this side of the structure, which is roughly five feet below the bottom of the pond. So we've dug down and created a pocket so that when you open the pond drain, you can flush water and whatever accumulates in that area through that pipe. In addition to that, because of the accordion hydraulic system, right, when there's more water passing over it, it lifts material from below and deposits on the other side, so it's considered self-cleaning.
Similar to a skimmer, like the laser thrower at the top?
Correct, yeah.
So you don't have a lot of pull low, you have a lot of the water's pulling from over the top?
Correct, and it creates almost like a negative pressure that pulls material, yeah.
That's pretty major for an avenue.
Yeah, and they have it, there, there's other dams in New Hampshire that have it, and they're pretty...
This is our?
Yes, yeah. There's also another labyrinth system, which, it's not an accordion like this. Instead, they're, they're rectangular accordions, um, and they're almost like fuse gates that will fall in certain storms. I didn't wanna create something that was gonna cost the town constant costs, so we didn't go that route. Um, but, yes.
Uh, Jake, more, more so. On this one, we have, we, we, at the previous meetings, we, we were told that there's going to be, while the dam's under construction, the flow will be about the same, because you're gonna have a bypass channel. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? We have two other concerns.
Yeah, the contractor and I are going through setting up a control of water plan. The intention, though, is that there will be a slight drawdown, approximately three feet, right, to assist with drying out the area that they're going to be doing. right, to assist with drying out the area that they're going to be doing the construction in. Then there will be, I believe right now what's being proposed is a culvert system similar to like Lower Wilson where water can flow through that pipe and get to the downstream channel and continue down to Lower Wilson Pond. In an emergency situation like we had in the floods this summer, I believe there's going to be a pilot channel and sheet plastic used to protect the dam if it was to overtop.
So that, our first concern, second concern is we know that some of the soils in Upper Wilson Pond are contaminated, and we're a little worried about some of that, some of that contamination coming down into Lower Wilson Pond. Can you talk about ways to make sure that water that's flowing through is, is not carrying things into the water downstream?
Yep, so I'm going to, I'm going to sidestep that a little bit, right? I am not aware that the soils within Upper Wilson are contaminated. We did not do testing of the soils as part of this project. When we were talking about dam removal, the state requires that because it could be, right? Because sediment tends to settle at dams, and if there was contamination in the water, you could have contamination in the pond, right? But nobody actually knows that. There was no testing unless you've done it, but I, I didn't.
We, uh, we are, like, this is hearsay, what we've heard, but there, there have been some things from the Upper Wilson Pond that may have contaminated. But we don't know that for sure. I'll admit that now. The third question...
Well, I still need to finish your question, right? Beyond that, right, the, the control of water plan and erosion control plans will require that water moving through the project site be clean water and go through turbidity, curtains and treatment. So the water that's transporting downstream should be just clear water that...
Okay. So we started testing in Lower Wilson Pond, we started testing last fall, in September we tested the culvert under Route 12 as it comes into Wilson Pond. And we're going to test that again this summer. If we see increases in things like phosphates or particulates or chlorides or whatever from that testing, who do we call?
Uh, the town.
Michael Breck, okay.
Or... Yeah. To be fair, the, the goal is to be able to take whatever flows are coming in, because we're not, I don't believe the intention is to close off the diversion channel, is to take whatever flows are coming in and transport them through the project, right? So, yep.
One of the other things I can add to it, to speak with the contractor, we're going to get going on this as soon as possible and hopefully have it done at the start of summer so it'll have minimal impact on recreational purpose on, on Wilson Pond. But that's the plan, have it done by summer season.
Thanks, Joe.
Is that it? Excellent. Oh, yes.
Rachel Elsens, what's my name? Uh, if you were talking about slightly lowering of the water in the, in the Lower Wilson Pond, how much of an impact are you targeting?
We are not, yeah.
About the wet prime line, or not going to lower?
We are not lowering Lower Wilson.
And does it impact the lower?
We are not going to lower Lower Wilson Pond. The flows that come into Upper Wilson are supposed to be maintained and transmitted downstream, so there should not be a significant difference in Lower Wilson Pond. If there was a drought, for example, at the beginning of last summer there was one, I understand there was some concerns, right? There's, there's not a lot that can happen here, right? Whatever flow gets into the diversion channel is what goes down to Lower Wilson Pond. That system is not changing, how that works.
So we'll see the slopes, a little, as you do that lowering of the Upper Wilson Pond, we'll see a little bit of water coming down.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
But that should stay well.
Yes, initially there's going to be about three feet drawn off, so the flows will be greater than they usually are, but not like a flood flow, it'll be just more. Yep.
Up above the upper pond, you've got the Branch River, right?
Yes.
And then you've got on the Branch River, there's a piece that comes off, is that what feeds the upper?
Yep, if you want to go up to...
Where I saw the water holding that dam down, right? I got where that walkway is. That's why that goes that way. The diversion dam off of Branch, and there, there's a trash rack you're going to speak to up there. There's a trash rack at the top of that diversion dam. That's why he was indicating there's not a lot of debris coming down because of that.
There's a...
That makes sense, I mean, this is a little question.
There's the railroad crossing that goes across the Branch River, right? Just downstream of that, there's a low head dam, so it's only about four feet tall, maybe three feet. It's not very tall, you can walk across it. There's an intake channel there with a trash rack and a gate so that you can force water to Upper Wilson. But it's limited to whatever water can get through that channel and whatever was happening into the Branch River. That transports to Upper Wilson, water in pushes water out, that goes to lower. Lower's a little bit different, right? It's an earth embankment dam, so it can actually get higher than the intake structure, and then that goes past the airport.
So when all of that, if we shut that off, you could honestly shut that water off to that, that upper pond, right? In an emergency case, you can, you could, yes, it's not, it's not made for that purpose, it's not, but an emergency flooding purpose we could... And then we go straight by the river, down the river, right? Yes.
The secondary river was that pulls upper and lower Wilson Pond?
Yes, when you cut off...
Shut that off, it's a dam he's talking about.
Oh, correct. By the, by the railroad, the secondary river.
Right, right.
Is there any, any thought to put into correcting the, the damage and district care or the, whatever you call it, the diversion dam up there off of Branch River?
In 2017, 2018, when we did repairs to Lower Wilson, we also did repairs to the diversion dam, town-owned proportioning. I don't know how to really define it, right? There is a concrete intake box that the trash rack lies on, and the trash rack was removed and cleaned and a new trash rack was put in, and then we also put in, you know, some walkways that were safe for the town, town workers to get to it, before they were just rotten logs. And then we also replaced the waste gate. So the waste gate is probably the best control you have, right? If you close that, it could potentially raise the water level going over the diversion dam, which would increase the water level that's going into the diversion channel. But those improvements were made, the diversion channel has not been improved.
I heard some, I don't know exactly what you call it, there's some logs working across that diversion channel to, I don't know, inhibit the flow or the speed of the water going into the upper dam. And, you know, after however many years, you know, the silt and whatever that has gone through, you know, that dam, you know, has, has filled that up. You're talking about putting the dam as 10 feet deep, well, I can almost guarantee there's no slot in that arm or, or a channel hidden that you posted at 10 feet.
Yeah, the, the, the depth requirement, yeah, the depth requirement was something by the Dam Bureau. Concrete structure and the improvements that are made to a dam need to be founded upon native soils, and they don't count the current soils there as native. They're talking about what was there before the dam even existed. So the reason that's founded so deep, it has to sit on that original ground, which is that depth. I would agree, I guess, I don't want to get in trouble here, but when I walked the, the diversion channel in 2017, you could see the original logs they used for, for supporting that channel, and I think if you walked it nowadays, it is more silted in.
It's what?
More silted in.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep. Any, any other questions?
Anybody online? With a hand raised or anything? No?
I have a question, sir. I live on Lightred Road and I live right across from the inlet, and the water is really low, and are you going to be able to raise the water so I can get my kayak in or not? Because my dog, my dog is crying, so is my neighbors that own the Pond Tomb Road, and I have to do, well, also, it might be a gym, you know, all the way down.
Do you, do you live on Upper Wilson Pond?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I do. We're up on Route 12.
The water level's coming up as of April 15th, Joe?
Yeah, April 15th is the day the water...
So on Lower Wilson by Route 12, it is lowered in the winter, and I provided memo to the town.
Is it going to be high enough though so we can get our kayak in?
Yes, it's brought back up, it's brought back up on April 15th because we bring it down so that when there are floods or runoff in the spring, the dam doesn't overtop. So eventually, I believe April 15th is what Joe's saying, it's going to be brought back up.
Okay, so I can't, you know, okay, that's what I'm asking, you know? Right now I'm not going to put my kayak in because it's all the muck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
I think I understand, okay, well, someone was confused before. If I remember here, it's correct, the dam is 10 feet, but a little good portion of it's below the current, of the, of the pond, Upper Wilson Pond. So it's not going to be 10 feet up, above the current bottom of Wilson Pond, of Upper Wilson Pond, it's going to be partly below it.
Below it.
So only how much feet will be sticking up?
Yeah, if you walk out there right now, it's about a foot deep, right? The concrete is matched with the bottom. It does slope away, it's gradual, there are parts of the pond that are about eight feet deep, right? And they're just upstream of that, and then as you work your way north, it's only a foot deep again, right? It's pretty much just a mud bog, right? Where that structure's being taken out is we're going 10 feet down, right? Because the dam embankment is between eight to 12 feet tall, right? If you were to stand on the road and look across, it's taller than you are, right? So we have to actually get down to the native soils there below the embankment and found the structure and whatever new improvements are going in that soil. Yeah, if you were to stand, I mean, I was standing on the spillway two years ago, doing borings in it, you could just step off and walk right into the muck, right? Because it's right there. We're going to excavate all that down, especially where the penstock is, I mean, it's two feet below the ground and then it's seven feet deep to get to the bottom of the penstock. All of that's coming down, and then we're going to replace that with concrete walls. So it'll be deeper in that section, but as you move upstream, it will come back up, and then as we flush it, maybe some of that sediment gets pushed downstream.
Or it is such an according dam?
Well, if it gets closer to the according dam, Joe is going to flush it theoretically twice a year or more, and he can flush that sediment out, and then if we do get a flood, which we typically do every year, some level of flooding, it should self-clean itself.
So there's no mechanical devices on this setup? Not, not the way you change heights or...
There, well, there is, currently there is nothing. I mean, you were not to open that gate. You've been told not to. The new dam, there will be, there will be a pond drain because you're required to have one. You're supposed to be able to de-water your pond in case of an emergency. So there will be a gate valve, a system of gate valves that you can open and drain the pond. You can also open a gate valve and draw water off for fire protection.
So that's...
Yep.
So whether it's on the same body of water?
Exactly the same.
It changes the size of the body of water?
Same size, same water level, yep.
And the landscape will be quite cleaned up quite a bit from what's there. A little more, I was going to ask if something debris would be gone, which would have been nice to be...
Charlie, could you explain the reason for the accordion dam and that instead of a dam that wide, it's that wide, but it's...
Right, so this dam currently, we call it them weers, right? Water flowing over a structure is considered a weir. The way it currently is, it, it's a straight weir. It goes from concrete wall to concrete wall, and it can only put out, it can only flow so much water based upon its length and technically its breadth upstream to downstream. So this one's even worse because it has an extra width, right? If we were to cut that down to only be one foot wide upstream to downstream, it's still limited by its length. By going to an accordion style, we end up creating more length in the same left to right footage. So initially, that weir can flow more water. As the water comes up, yes, the accordion style becomes less efficient, but still more efficient than just a straight weir. So we're essentially, earlier in the storm, we're able to push more water through so that the water level doesn't increase and overtop the dam.
So like if you took that accordion and just stretched it out, it'd be this wide?
Correct.
And all those walls?
So I've got, let's say, 100 feet left to right, and I'm fitting about 330 feet of length in that. Yeah.
Thank you, and if you and your associate can just give Beverly your names for the record?
Yes. Yeah.
All right, moving on to appointments, we have Cheshire County Administrator Chris Coats and EMS Chief Chad McMurr. There's a microphone at the red seat there, if you like.
So I'm going to, if it's all right, just, is it all right to speak standing or do you want me to sit?
If you grab the mic.
I'm, I'm good standing if that's all right. So we, we come before you, I know that the EMS is the conversation, but we also would be remiss if we didn't report out, first of all, we ask that at some point we can come back to you and just talk about county as a whole, because there's a lot of things going on in the county and we're excited to be able to tell our, our story, what's going on. But I will tell you that on Monday of this week, the delegation came together after the commissioners in December had moved forward a budget, you know, of course it starts with the department heads and ourselves creating the budget, and last year, if you remember, we passed a budget that had zero percent of, zero percent increase to taxes to be raised from the county's portion of the budget. Yeah, this, this week, we passed a budget that is a negative 0.09% of increase of taxes to be raised from the county's portion of the budget. There's a lot of work that we put into this. I brought you a look, some information that, we have Director of Finance Cheryl Trombley here tonight, she can talk to this too, but that will show you that over a 10-year period where we've come from and, and where we're at, and we understand by statute that there's certain services we have to do, we have to give. We also know that in the last three or four years, the marketplace, when it comes to salaries and wages, have spent all over the places. But we've worked extremely hard to also understand the fiscal realities that we're, we're under as we move forward. So I wanted to bring you this tonight just to share with you. When we come back, we can talk about it more in depth, and Cheryl, is there anything that you want to say? I will tell you this though, just because we give you a zero-based budget, that we send it up to the Department of Revenue Administration, we, but we've done our job. They then take a look at all 22 towns' valuations in the city of Keene. That's about $12 billion, just under, it's about $11.9 billion. They take your valuation and divide it by the 11, 11 billion and, and change, and that's your apportionment that's assigned to you that you pay towards the, towards the county. So we don't have a lot of control of that, you have a rolling five-year evaluation process that goes on, and so we just want to make you aware that when we do our due diligence, it's when we create the budget and we send it out the door, then we sort of lose control of it. And it's a process that, we can talk about it greater depth, because I know that's not what we're here tonight to talk about. But again, if at some point, Michael, if you want to invite us back to, and talk in length about some of the programming that's going on within the county, we'd love to have that opportunity. And we can also send in this to you, Dr. Trombley, if you're sure. At the bottom line for me, if I remember last time, over the last five years, if you look at the last five years, the county's portion of taxes to be increased has gone, has risen by 0.68%. In the last 10 years, it's 2.19%. So my predecessor, sir, who sits here tonight, and then myself, we take great pride in trying to understand the circumstances we're in and try to then ensure that the services are the highest quality for those that are in need, and at the same time, meeting the needs of our community. So with that being said, I'm going to, tonight we have Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Woznick, Cheryl Trombley, our Director of Finance, Chad McMurr, our interim Chief for EMS, and Mark is where, and Mark Kramer, who's our Deputy Chief, and also Chad Butler, who is our Jeff Ball trade for us now, we're doing all kinds of different works, and he's the one that's going to, has really developed some things that I think will help moving forward, tell our story around the Cheshire EMS, but... But Chief, if you want to tell the, start telling the story, then it may come back to us when it comes to finance, and Cheryl and I can, can talk a little bit about that, and I don't know if you can have the, have the ability to put anything in to show up there if you want. Okay. So, I'm just gonna have Chad plug in, or if you want to, Mr. Administrator. So, thank you for having us here tonight, my name's Chad McFar, I'm the interim Chief at EMS here. This is our data from last year, all right? The important thing to remember about last year was, you didn't start doing the 911s, especially for Swansea, or throughout the county, until July 11th. With that, this is only half of the year of data. This year is our big year, as far as collecting data points and moving that forward. So, to my understanding, there are some questions about receiving our data in real-time, and what Chad Butler has set up for us through our county website, to retrieve that data, and what it actually means, is that a correct summation?
I, I did try to look on the website, wasn't able to, I wasn't able to figure it out.
Okay. Right, but honestly, and...
It's just a, it's just a update in general.
So I, I think showing, and showing how to navigate to the response data that we have up on the county website now, under our department link, will show an awful lot of, an update for us, all right? We continue to be a twenty-four-seven emergency service for the town of Swansea, along with other contracted towns for primary ALS and BLS, or paramedic level calls and EMT level calls, along with backup for five other towns, plus the city of Keene and their towns, for paramedic intercept, and again, backup transport. Swansea is by far our largest call volume center, and the data will show that it continues to be that way. We've started to build a good rapport with your fire department, the police department, as well as we've been growing over the last year and a half, and certainly the last year since we started with the 911 contract. I know Chief Mattson made a comment to us at that structured fire a few weeks ago, on how grateful he was that we were there to have their backs if something, knock on wood, were to happen. So we're continuing to develop and nurture those relationships, myself included, I'm in a learning curve here, I'm, I'm a field operator, I have been for a long, long time, so taking this step into the administration role is a little bit new to me. So if I stumble, my apologies. But I'm here if you need me, if anyone needs a paramedic, all right? And I brought another one with me, a third. So see, I'm prepared. Anyway, so, the new and improved Cheshire County website, if you go to Departments, there we are, under EMS. Scroll down, you have that top point of response data is the last one, and that's what we're really here for. But it tells us, tells you about our mission and our vision, on how to continue to respond to the citizens of Cheshire County. So this data, all these data points are from what's called ImageTrend, which is a state-born website, it's where our reporting, so any EMT, paramedic, AEMT in the state creates what's called PCR, or Patient Care Report, through ImageTrend and NHERS, which is how we do all our paperwork, to document our patient encounters. So we're able to extrapolate certain things. This is a breakdown of year-to-date, from January one twenty-four through December of twenty-four. This gets updated every time one of my crews hits complete on a call that was done in Swansea. And this holds true for all of our towns. So any, anyone can go in and look at what we're doing. This breaks down the days of the week and the hours of the day, it shows where the most call volume comes, okay? As you can see, the darker areas are higher volume times, so at noon time on Wednesdays, the possibility of having up to nine calls going on is there. This looks at all the data throughout the entire year so far, and, and pushes it all together, all right? So it, it's fairly sporadic, which is the nature of our business. This is set on a timer, so it'll be up there for about...
Hi, pause button, there's a play pause button in between the navigation, in the top right-hand corner.
So normally, this is on a loop, runs for, each page will be up for about sixty seconds, and then I'll switch to the next one, or you can physically go through it and click to the next slide. Again, just a pie chart showing the type of location that we're responding to, the majority is homes or private residences, then apartments, and it breaks it down so you can see what type of calls are, where we're responding to, all right? The street or highway ones would obviously mean more of a motor vehicle crash, or some type of incident with that, to help show where different things may need to be done. If the police were looking at a certain intersection of, hey, how many times do we respond to accidents here? They have their data, they could ask us for, they could look at this and be like, yeah, they're starting to intersect, so maybe we can mitigate that somehow. All right. So I'm told the colors are set by ImageTrend, all right, we're gonna work on that and try to get a better color scheme going for this. So the top bar graph is Cheshire County EMS, all right? Our average time of total time on task, all right? Once we respond, and don't forget, there's a process, so the second that you pick up nine-one-one, call nine-one-one, it doesn't go to Southwest Mutual Aid in Keene, it goes to Concord, to their switchboard, where they start the process of what's called EMD, or Emergency Medical Dispatching. They start asking questions, they confirm your name, or your phone number, your address, all right? They repeat it back to you, and make sure that if something happens, and that line goes dead, or you hang up, they can call you back and elicit more information. Once they confirm that, they'll send more information, they'll send that information to...
Get closer to my...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was projecting well enough. Thank you. Once that information is sent to the local area dispatch, that's when they hit the tone for Swansea Fire and Cheshire County EMS, okay? And from our point, our out-of-shoot time is always important, because that's a time from when the tone drops, to when my crew signs on with four-one-five, saying, Cheshire, or County A4, we're en route to one-twenty-three Main Street, I don't even, I don't believe there is a one-twenty-three Main Street, so we're safe for HIPAA. We're en route to one-twenty-three Main Street for the metal.
Yeah, nobody can read that, as you go for all three, uh, per shoot time in Swansea's fifty-four seconds.
So...
Do you just define shoot time?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that. So that is from, like I said, when the tone drops, when four and five presses, presses that button to transmit, an alert for Swansea Fire and us, that starts the clock. It ends...
How long does it have to get up and around?
Fifty-four seconds.
Okay, that's... So that's like pulling your parachute, shoot time?
Yes, exactly, and that's where it comes from.
Right, makes sense.
So that's to when they sign on with four-one-five, that shoot time stops.
It's pretty fast.
It could be faster, and I'll talk to my crews about that, all right? So now our en route time, as we all know, distance in this area is not anyone's friend, because it takes a little bit to get really anywhere. Our average on-scene time, from the time we call on and are moving, to the time we arrive on scene, is what's?
Seven minutes, thirty seconds.
Seven minutes and thirty seconds. National average per, I'm gonna screw this up because I'm not a firefighter, NFPA, I believe is the acronym, nine-minute response time.
What do you say, seven what?
Seven and a half.
How do you count this out, how many, how many do you average out, like is it thousands or...
Every call that we do in Swansea goes into this average.
Oh.
From Ju, from January first of this year to right now. So this could conceivably update if one of our crews completed, and I know we had a couple calls earlier this evening in Swansea, so as soon as they hit complete on their...
It's in the average.
It goes into the average.
So you don't want to see ten-minute one?
No, I don't.
That's very average.
Ten-minute, if it's down the Richmond Line, that I could understand, all right? If it's at, say, six, sixty-four Lake Street, it better be about twenty-five seconds.
And it has been.
It has, yes. So, just to make note, the bottom bar graph is the ninetieth percentile, that's the rest of the state that we're being compared to right there, for our response time, from when the unit signs on responding, to arriving on scene. So, that average looks like what?
Thirty minutes, four seconds.
So, we're almost cutting that in half for your, for the town of Swansea right now.
So the average is thirty?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next line you'll see is patient contact time. What this means, from the time the ambulance arrives on scene, to when we get to that patient's side, because let's not forget, we're rural, they could be in a recreational area, where we have to hike up to get them on a trail, we have to get into their house, sometimes we have to literally break into their house to gain access, to make that patient contact. So again, our, that time from getting out of the ambulance, grabbing our gear, getting to the patient's side, is looking at about two minutes.
And seven seconds.
And seven seconds. All right? So now, we've made patient contact. This is the point that pre-hospital care starts. This is that extension of the emergency room, that helps with that continuum of care for all our citizens, all right? The moment one of my EMTs, or paramedics, or AEMTs gets there, and just to clarify the difference, EMT is your first rung in the EMS provider level. It's basic life support, it's, they can use an AED, all right? That we, I know there's a sign here that says there's an AED in this building. So an EMT basic could grab that, knows how to use it, shock the person that's in a cardiac arrest, whose heart is stopped, and start that life-saving chain to get them the best outcome possible. Advanced EMTs, they can do a bit more, they can start IVs to give certain medications, they can help a patient breathe more easily through medications and different devices. Then you have the paramedics, that is truly minus a few things, in a more controlled setting, an emergency room physician at your bedside, okay?
So that will be the top.
That is the top, okay? Now, depending on how the call comes in through their dispatch, based on those questions that they're asking, we may just send an EMT for your loved one who just fell, isn't complaining of any injuries, and just needs a hand-getting backup, okay? But that EMT can still do, will still do an assessment, and make sure that there aren't any other concerning injuries that the patient may not understand or feel at that particular moment. And they can always call for higher levels of care to come and help and assist. If you have chest pain, shortness of breath, and based on those questions, how they ask, anything that would quote-unquote be a Charlie level, which is what those questions will help dictate, and that's a whole different presentation, just so you know, I'm giving you the Cliff Notes version. We're gonna send a paramedic automatically, just to make sure that it's not needed, the paramedic is not needed, but they're there if they are. So now we're on at-scene time. Like I said, this is where that pre-hospital care has been initiated, they're starting with an assessment, they're starting to do interventions, and take care of the patient right then and there. We're at about twenty-one and a half minutes, twenty-one-twenty-five, I believe, is our average time. That could be longer, depending on how sick the patient is. Because like I said, we're bringing the emergency room to that patient's side, all right? So a lot of the data currently in pre-hospital care is, you stay on scene a bit longer and stabilize, you treat the patient there. That paramedic is gonna reach in his medication box and start treating the patient, just like a doctor would in the emergency room. So, back in the day, it was kinda, oh, the ambulance shows up, throw him in the back, go to the hospital. Those days are behind us, all right? Because the evidence and research has shown, it's better to stay, provide the proper, appropriate level of care to that patient at the bedside, before you transport to the hospital and the like. So, about twenty minutes, that's a fair average, and then our transport time?
Fourteen minutes.
About fourteen minutes and four seconds. Once that care's been established, nine times out of ten, the ambulance is gonna turn off their lights, and go to the hospital with the flow of traffic. That's one thing that our medical director from Cheshire Medical Center has wanted us to do, because lights actually aren't all that safe, all right? It's putting more people at risk if we're driving through with lights and sirens, more so than just with flow of traffic, all right? Because we're able to take care of that patient from the scene, into the back of the ambulance, and to the hospital, more effectively and safely, just by going with flow of traffic, right? Then we arrive at the hospital, and within about, looks like about five minutes or so...
Six minutes, fifty-five seconds.
Where that unit is now pretty much back in service, and ready to respond to the next call. So, we're looking at just about an hour, roughly, from the time you call nine-one-one, gets shuffled around through the PCE app, which stands for Public Safety Phone and Address, or Address and Phone, it's how they, your address and phone number pop up on the dispatch screen in Concord, and then over to Keene. And I was told this has a lot of industry jargon in it, I'm trying to put it to the latest terms as best possible, but also educate, because over the years, that's what I've found, no one really knows what EMS does, other than they come to, come in the ambulance, they come in, they do some stuff, they put you in the ambulance, and they take you away, all right? Versus fire departments and police departments, you know, they have a much more robust community education program, which I'm hoping to change here in the next, at least in my tenure here at Cheshire EMS, of educating as much as making sure that we're responding and serving the citizens of Cheshire County. So I hope that explains the, this graph a bit more. The next one, there was an update with the Reporting Service, that's being rolled out in the rest of New Hampshire, is gonna start using it by the end of April, we started testing it early for the state, that's why you see a hundred and...
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five calls now, it was one, see, it was one forty-six this morning.
Right.
That says no value. That's because the data points that we put in got changed in this update, all right? But this basically breaks it down of what type of calls you're seeing. So there's twenty-two BLS care, and the patient was transported in that... We started testing it early for the state. That's why you see a hundred and
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five calls now. It was one, see, it was one forty-six this morning.
Right.
Um, that says no value. That's because the data points that we put in got changed in this update. All right, but this basically breaks it down of what type of calls you're seeing. So there's twenty-two BLS care, and the patient was transported in that ambulance that arrived on scene. Uh, there were seven calls that were canceled on scene with no patient contact, meaning we get there, the fire department or police department's there, oh, hey, it was a good intent call, there's no one home, or they said they're fine, they don't need us, and they cancel us before we make that patient contact. All right, and it goes on, on down the line. Most of our transports are to Cheshire Medical Center, and that's the answer reason, because we're very close to Cheshire. The other ones, it could be we go to Brattleboro, we go to, uh, Athol Hospital. So one, it's, the patient has the right to request what hospital they go to. All right, and based on the prac- the field practitioner's assessment and how quote-unquote sick, or how we'd say acute the patient is, we can oblige by that and say, yep, we're, we can take you there because it makes more sense. That's where your, your doctor is and the like, so we have that continuum of care for the patient.
If somebody's really in need of care for us, and you do say you go to Cheshire.
We will go to the closest, most appropriate facility, which to that, it may very well be Cheshire, or we're going to call for a helicopter and say, we need a helicopter, this patient is having a heart attack. They need to go to this, to what, a place that has what's called a cardiac catheterization lab to definitively treat that patient. We may do it by the way of Cheshire Medical Center, so that that patient can get a, one more medication on or given to them before the helicopter gets there, but we're going to be moving as efficiently and safely as we can to get that patient to definitive care. Again, this is just a breakdown of the type of calls that we're going to, and with the update, this hasn't quite caught up yet.
They're working on it, um, because this is a relatively new shop there in the company as well. Um, for some reason, the, because you can see year-to-date changes on the graph, correct? So as we approach June, you'll start seeing those numbers transcribed over unless they can fix it before then. So you can see more accurate representations of those year-to-date changes, which is nice for the public understanding.
Yes. And again, just, most of the calls right now we're looking at, uh, are at the BLS, so that EMT level. Paramedics, we've had about seventeen calls in that, in the last couple of months, and it breaks it down to also the AEMT pa- level of patient that is out of luck. So it's going to give you that idea of how sick your residents are when they're calling 911. And again, that no value one will be updated as soon as they fix that whole glitch in the down lines. Yes. So I hope that helps. The last part is a heat map. All right, this is pretty cool. So it's showing us where most of the call volume is. And as you can see by the shaded areas, where the county decided to put our station initially, it was a pretty smart choice. All right, hence our fantastic response times in your town. All right, that being said, it's still centrally located throughout the county, so we are able to respond to our other communities as quickly as possible.
There is a lot more color on here, just the, the projector's struggling a little bit. There's a bunch of purple here, out here, out here, and so on.
And this is about as far as we'll zoom in on your end, because we do want to protect people, patients' privacy, which still kind of boggles my mind a little bit, because dispatch sends out the resident's last name along with the address when they send it. I'll work on that too. But it's, it shows you a very real depiction of where the calls are happening in your community since January one. And we'll continue to do that as soon as our crew members hit complete on their run, on their PCRs. So that's the rundown on the data. Like I said, you can go to the county website under Departments for EMS and follow the links, and hopefully that gives a bit more of an understanding of what this says. And we're going to edit it, uh, for color and label it a little bit better as we're able uh, through image trend and the state.
Current status?
Current status? Staffing, we are.
I was just going to thank him, but, uh.
My, my question, which is still, still outstanding, I was looking for the data for last year. Doesn't look like that's on there.
It is not. We are working to get last year's data up there, but what's in front of you, Mr. Minister, is last year's data, and it's broken down by town, not quite in this detail, but it does have how many responses we've had in your town from July of last year until December thirty-first.
And if I'd like it in the format that we had discussed when we agreed to the contract, would that be through you or Chad or Chris?
That would be through me. I'll facilitate it, and we'll get that to you.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, this is, this is awesome information.
And hopefully, moving forward in the future, this surpasses the contract as far as the reporting that is required by.
You don't want to get, you don't want to know if the responses are sponsored or not, you know, the highest, not sponsored.
I personally, I would love to say I don't want any responses. Because that means someone's having a bad day. All right, but yes, you're.
You're at the top.
You're at the top. But based on population and, and the like.
And ages.
And ages, every, everything goes into play. We have a much more aged population throughout the county. We have a more cul- I don't want to say culture, uh, economically diverse population, so all these things go into what happens and why 911 is initiated and ambulances are, are needed.
Thank you. And my question is, is it too soon to find out if the business plan is working as you'd hoped? And are the inter-facility transports where you think they were initially, um, 911, is that more or less than you thought? And collections, you know, the?
I'll speak to that. Uh, I'm Cheryl Troblin.
Hi, Cheryl.
How are you? Good to see everybody. So, um, in reflecting in 2023, some of it is a little too soon to tell. Um, we did not start taking, we did not start taking the, um, 911 contracts until July one. We did have West Milan as of April. The inter-facility transfers, I would say, are, are very much, um, where we would expect them to be. There have been, um, in our gross billings, but gross billings are not something to gauge because that's not what we end up collecting, but we did end up having gross billings of, um, approximately six point five million. As of the end of 2023, between those gross billing, billings, we collected about two, a little over two million, and we're still collecting for 2023. It's a cash basis, um, when it comes to, um, the, the, the payments for ambulance billings, until they get billed out either to the insurance companies, to Medicare, to Medicaid, to the private pay citizens and whatnot, you don't end up achieving your cash flow until it comes in hand. Over 2023, we were with a certain billing company that we actually ended up, um, ending, um, our, our business with. We're still using them for run-out claims, but we have since gone to another billing company. The billing company, um, some of the advancements, uh, enhancements that we're going to end up seeing with this new company that we were, um, dealing with, with the previous company, is our inter-facility transfers. They didn't see any of them as, um, uh, advanced emergent calls. They saw every transfer going from one, uh, from Cheshire Medical to another one as a non-emergent call, and you know, that was just one example of something that we could not get them to understand. The new company recognizes that predominantly the majority of the calls of the transports that are going from Cheshire to another facility, ours is because they need a higher level of care, and they cannot be taken care of, and they are emergent. So that's going to be an enhancement that we've only started working with this billing company as of our claims first, November first. Um, another positive is the Medicaid rate has, um, essentially, I think, doubled to be closer to the Medicare rate, and we, um, just with the natural flow of Medicare, there is going to be a slight increase in the Medicare rate reimbursement. This company, in addition to us starting to see more of our inter-facility transfers coming in at a reimbursement rate of an emergent versus non-emergent, they also accept credit cards. The other company didn't, and, um, and their turnaround time in the billing is just, well, it's, it's days rather than the, our previous billing company was like six to, six weeks to almost two months behind. And so we've, we've had, um, we've had growing pains, there's no doubt. Um, more recently, and this is no fault of the company we're working with, they, the clearinghouse that they present all our claims through, it was one of the largest hacks. Um, and so they have not been able to send any of our claims out for probably a good month and a half. They finally have been able to get, um, a, a good chunk of the insurance ones out as of yesterday, but they're having to re, um, redo all the electronic data contracts for Medicare and Medicaid. So there's just seems to always be one thing after another to be able to really give a good sense of where, you know, where we are. But there's no doubt 2023 was startup. It was startup. We, uh, we, we, we were ready to roll as of January one, 2023. So we were ramping up for something that obviously didn't, um, ha- happen until July one, so there's, you know, 2024 will be our, um, our year to, to really have a better sense of how the, um, the, the program is running as far as financially in support of the expenses. But we used, um, ARPA funds in 2024, 2023. We have a small amount that we're using in 2024 for the subsidies that we did promise, um, and, um, allow for the, the town contracts. We also have those for 2025. And so that's really the update on the finances.
Great, thank you.
Cheryl, what's the difference between emergent and not emergent?
Okay, well, I'll let him speak to that.
So when we think of 911, we think of emergencies throughout, okay? When it comes to the inter-facility transfers, you have a couple of different levels. Think of it as you're taking a patient from a safe environment, putting them in an unsafe environment, which is how we get between the two facilities, ambulance or air ambulance, what have you, to a safer environment. What Cheryl said earlier of the billing company understand, our new billing company understanding that the patients that we're bringing to Dartmouth in Lebanon, Concord Hospital, Bay State Hospital down in Springfield, Mass, sometimes Albany Hospital in New York, they're going for what's called a higher level of care. It's that continuum of care that Cheshire Medical Center cannot provide, so they have to be sent to a higher level of care for either a medical issue or a trauma issue. All right, because Cheshire Medical just doesn't have certain specialties on staff twenty-four, seven to handle these type of patients. So that's where we come in, in the inter-facility transfers, to take them to that higher level of care. Going to that higher level is an emergent transport, because if they stay in that safe environment without getting to a safer environment, the o- the odds of them declining go up. So us taking them to that safer environment, that higher level of care is in a wit, is basically an emergency.
It's almost like a 911 all over again.
Correct.
Except for that you don't have to have the person at home. It's the, the facility saying, we need this person transferred because they, the care.
Can you just give a couple of examples, like, how did that extend to stroke?
So, and just to clarify what a non-emergent is, so the patient has been seen at the hospital and now needs to go to a nursing home or a rehab facility to continue their care, to get better, to come home, that would be a non-emergent. So the type of emergencies that we're talking about is you have a heart attack or what's called a ST elevation MI in medical terms. You have to get to that cardiac cath lab so that the narrowing in your blood vessel in your heart that is narrowed, they can go in and open it up so normal blood flow can get to the rest of the heart muscle. That's where you hear all the commercials for, uh, you know, time is muscle. Make sure you have a AED around so that you can get them out of those lethal ri- rhythms, or the, uh, time to act fast commercials for strokes, that's another emergent transfer. Because they can go in and either give them medications, or like a har- like a heart attack, they can go in and it's like a little Chinese finger cup that they go in, they insert, and that expands that blood vessel so they can get that blockage out or that narrowing out and allow more blood flow through, either to the heart or to the brain. So the, these are time-sensitive patients, and like Cheryl said, they're, it's basically a 911 call all over again. It's just the scene is the hospital, and our destination is an hour and a half or so away.
And depending upon the hospital's capacity, a non-emergent might be, they simply don't have a bed. If there's a bed an hour away, same level of care, they just don't have room. So there's been a lot of times where they bring the C-section department, oh, you can't take anymore patients. But yeah, but if you want that patient admitted, it's a, they have to move to another facility because there's no beds available in Cheshire.
So from a billing perspective, because that's how it was raised, what was the significance? Why did it matter?
It's a much higher reimbursement from the insurance for that emergent continuum of care.
So that's a substantial difference.
It is. So, so like Cheryl said, there's a lot of growing pains and, and a learning curve, both from the county, from Cheshire County EMS, and from the towns, on what actually goes into every aspect of this type of service.
So not only are you delayed in getting payment, but you might be getting less payment because of the way it was categorized.
Yes, exactly. And predominantly, every claim that went out by our original biller, uh, billing company from the time they opened until October thirty-first, 2023, was at the lower level.
So the billing company actually influences them to get the emergency, get the big money?
Well, you have to, you have to bill appropriately. You can't do any fraudulent billing. But this particular company who works out of Massachusetts, they just, they, they just.
Didn't get it.
Didn't get it. They didn't do inter-facility transfer billings much, although they did, it did work for our previous, uh, another provider. But they, it, they, they just would not trust that.
So we. So we recognize that.
We, we tried to get them to recognize the difference in the level of care, but they, they just couldn't do it. So the, the, the rate of reimbursement, we have a, we have a rate sheet, you can see that rate sheet. Simple basic transfer might be a thousand dollars, complex one might be three thousand, be able from there, be a mileage rate. So it's a more service that you provide based on how sick the patient is gets reflected in the clinical notes that you make about what you did for that patient, right? And so you submit that, somebody looks at that and says, oh, you provided some medication, there was a medical on board, you had certain symptomologies, you did certain things, you took certain interventions, and that level of care that gets provided is what is the basis for the reimbursement. So the better your clinical record is in reflecting what you did for the patient, the better the likelihood that you'll get a higher reimbursement rate.
And that's another thing that we've evolved into over the last year is solidifying certain positions, all right? We now have a deputy chief of clinical services. We now have a deputy chief of clinical services that oversees all of our quality assurance and insurance of looking at, are the crews completing their paperwork properly? Are they trained properly? Are they understanding what they need to do? If they have questions, he answers them. Plus he is also, has been working diligently to contact different municipality departments to schedule trainings. I know Swansea has come to our trainings that we've had at our station and they've thoroughly enjoyed them. It's been a work in progress getting in contact with a lot of different people. So that's coming more and more. We, the deputy was a few minutes behind me this evening because we just received through grant fund, the Sampson grant funding, a very high fidelity medical mannequin to help us train, help us train outside departments in, he, he's very excited about it, he's, I'm surprised he's kind of not jumping in the seat right now.
He's in the backseat?
No, no, he did, he did leave it at the station. But no, this is, this is just one more piece that we can bring to our community outreach, to our different contracted areas and honestly, just the county in general, all right? I, I want to satisfy everyone's contracts, but first and foremost, we're here to serve the county and the citizens in it when they call 911. I don't care what address goes off when our pages go off or where the address is when our pages go off, I want to make sure that we have a trained crew going to that emergency. And that's what we're building more and more moving forward.
I think one more thing to just mention that the county being involved in this, it's not there yet, but we're very hopeful that with a lot of advocacy from the county, from the board of, chairman of the board, Jack Wozniak, that we may start seeing that we get reimbursed for non-transports. There's a lot of care that is provided, you don't get paid for because when 911 is called, you have to go and you're, you're interacting with that person, but if they don't get transported, you don't get paid.
Nothing?
Not a, nothing.
So you tell them, how many of you think those happen?
A lot.
A lot. So you put your crew in, then you're headed to the house, you got there, they don't want to go in the ambulance, you have, you collect no money.
I'll give you a better one, Mr. Key.
Yep.
You, 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 I'm an ambulance, right?
Got it.
A little, a little bit, but you go to a house and somebody's had a cardiac arrest, you're there with a half a dozen of your team members, you're doing CPR administration calls, working on them for 30, 40 minutes, right? Doing prehospital care in their setting to bring them back to life in order to stabilize them so they can transport. If you pronounce them on the scene after all those resources are being used, you get nothing. You get nothing. Because the origins of reimbursement for ambulances for decades at federal regulatory level has been transferred. You get reimbursed if you transfer it because the origins were, we didn't have a lot of prehospital care, we just put it in and screwed it. And so we're, I'm working, Chris is working, we're all working, it's not like it's just our work. To go through a paradigm shift at the state and federal level, that prehospital care happens in the community and it needs to be paid for. It's an uphill battle because it could be pretty expensive. So that, that's, those are years that we're literally at today and, and last month of the day to begin to get reimbursement, at least from Medicaid for non-transports, recognizing that care is provided in the community, particularly if it saves the state money by avoiding the costly hospitals, state emergency fund business. So all of these things are, coming back to Sly's question about is the formula working? I'm going to say yes, notwithstanding the bumps in the road that we had with providers and, and cyber attacks that some of these brokerages and so forth. The good news is we've based a lot of these presumptions on Medicare rate, which has increased. We've based a lot of these presumptions on Medicaid rate, which has now doubled. And, and so, and we're working to increase the reimbursement for all the services, including non-transports. So in general, the picture moving forward offers more stability probably today than it did when we talked to you a year and a half or two years ago. Obviously, the rates still have to increase dramatically and, and obviously we've had that conversation with you, using the, the federal funds to smooth the increase, to get to a sustainable level. But we're working very hard to, to.
So the future's looking bright if you guys can get over these bumps.
It is, it's still.
And that's going to help us in the long run if we continue with you and keep the rates.
Yeah, it's still a very.
You have a great argument. Your argument is you said that you used to go pick them up, throw them in and take them. Now you're saying you stay there. So you're doing a lot more now on the scene, so you need to be compensated for that.
And the good news is.
The first emergency.
Yeah. If you remember back to the graph, the person starts getting care within, it was less than 15 months, from my response time to the on-scene time. So all those things are good things. We're, we're just, we just need to do everything we can in there to, to soften that blow, to mitigate the cost of this $6 million apartment. Five, five. And actually, as County Government, we're actually pretty well poised to influence legislation. And I, that never happened before.
This is happening across the board, whether, you know, we're evolving from a lot of different departments. That's why we want to come back and talk to you because, you know, as of this week, we are now in four towns doing some level of law enforcement. Because towns can't fund the people, so they've asked us to come in and take over that, those, that, that department, you know? And so the Sheriff's Department is, is doing that. We have the regional prosecutor program that has been going on for years.
So you're, for Sly, you're next to.
Yeah, I understand. So I'm going to bring it back, I'm, I was getting it, Jack. But I, you know, it's, it's just that in a, in a year's time, in a year's time, we need to develop a continuum of care that we never thought we would be in this position, but we are, but we developed a continuum of care that starts with wheelchair service. We haven't even touched on that. We work with a private vendor, Smartlight, we've helped support them, helped drove them. They were a company that was doing about 40 runs a month actually, and they're now doing about three, three to 400 runs a month because we've been able to help them get up, get some, some dents, and that's helping us. Because that means the ambulances aren't going to pick somebody up and bring them back, they are able to take out a wheelchair being back. We also just recently gave them a wheelchair, a purchase, helped them purchase a wheelchair structure so that they can do some of those calls that, that.
Or borderline EMT or.
But, it keeps our ambulances on the road for the 911s in, in, in facility transfers. You, you had last year, you had 163 interfacility transfers if I looked at your, your study that you did. So that's people that need to be transported out of Cheshire Medical to wherever, and wherever isn't just.
A nursing home or something where you.
Oh, no, yes, yes. Or Lebanon, or Albany, New York, or Connecticut, or New York. 176 Swansea residents. Swansea, Swansea residents last year had, were able, were able, were transferred through a facility transfer.
Think about it this way, 176 Swansea residents went to the hospitals and had their own stuff. At the end of the day, they're going to go home again. A lot of times that takes a wheelchair. So that's a much lower level of care. So what we're trying to do is we use a lower cost service to get them back and not tie them in with $10,000 ambulance to just, just somebody around home.
Right, so we're, we've looked at all, all the aspects, we've got it all open, money, the interfacility transfers. Last year, the hospital came back, does, and reported out that we were about 250 runs higher than we were the year prior. So I mean, we're, we're getting there, but last year was a throw, was, was a, was a startup year and it was, we ramped up, ready to go, ready to go, ready to go. We ramped up even more because we thought we were going to be really going and we didn't really get going with the 911 calls until July and August. And there's an 80 to 120 day turnaround just for that type of revenue to start coming in. So we're going, we, we learned last year where we were, this year we're really understanding, starting to understand the flow of it and it's changing all the time. But Jack is right in, in that we're up in Concord too. This is the other advantage we have is that we can, we can work with our delegation, we can work with individuals up in Concord. We had six meetings with the commissioner of insurance, DJ Beckencourt, and his staff about how, you know, how we can get fair rates because ambulance sometimes are paying less than Medicaid, okay? And it just, it's crazy and it's, it's across the board while we're seeing across the board the state of the country, while we're in the crisis that we're in. And so we're trying to advocate at the same time for ourselves and everybody else that's out there, we're trying to build this and, and I think we're, we're getting to the point. I also understand that in June of 2026, you're, you know, there's going to be, you know, that's when our, if this contract is up, if I rip the thing right. And we'll, prior to that, as early as we can, we want to tell you, even prior to what is in the, you know, in the contractual terms, we want to, we want to be able to say, this is what we're looking at. But we also know in the county, from the county's perspective, we may have the ability to look at different ways to, to do certain things, hopefully, you know, moving forward. But I can't look at you in the straightest face today and say where we're going to land yet. I, I wouldn't be there because we don't know yet, we're still learning. But I will tell you that we're fully staffed right now. I will tell you that we're putting people on Perdean, we're asking them if we can put them on file because we've had this increase influx of people wanting to come on board with us, which is such a great thing. And I tell you that, that this guy down here, and it worked incredibly hard, Mark has worked incredibly hard to develop an onboarding that we're getting praise from people, veterans, that are saying, we've never, we've never had this. Because we don't want to just bring them on for the sake of bringing them on, we want to bring them on, we want them to understand our core values, we want them to understand how we're looking at everything that we're doing. And, and so we're really excited to have the interim chief here and doing the magic he's doing and, and we look forward to having many years with him in, in place going forward. And, and we're in a good place from where we were a year ago. We're growing every single day and learning every single day.
As far as we've almost outgrown the facility that we built. Yeah. We've got six days and they got lots of other ambulances and, and we've got, your paramedic, your consultant, your UConn, whatever it is. And, you know, Sebastian's proud of it.
Check in the van, Larry.
No, yeah, it'll be empty.
You know, from a training point, from a training point, you know, I think this came up a year or two ago, we also do a lot of community training and just by an example, you're, there'll be about 20 kids from Manana Regional that are going to get CPR training on the 27th. And then a second class of Manana Regional in Keen High on April 18th. So I reached out, I do some work with the Rotary Track Club. And so we've got like almost 30 of those students that want to get CPR certified, so we're going to do that.
Did you do football games there?
Yes, we did. We covered Manana football games. We were down here at Cheshire Fairgrounds last year. We actually, a gentleman stopped by the station laws in another meeting earlier this afternoon about the 4H events at the Cheshire County Fairgrounds, looking for, that they have to have an ambulance for, that's going to be a discussion. But we are, we're building more and more, okay? Having the deputy chief of clinical services in place for that municipal training and he oversees our community outreach liaison, right? We're putting that information out there as best we can and building the county website so that it's, you're able to find these things or our Facebook page so that people know where to reach out, stop by the station, we're there 24/7, or someone else.
So in River, you're.
Yes. But I've, I've been in EMS for, going on 25 years, mostly in urban settings and much higher call volumes. What we're building here and the need that I've seen in the last year and a half since I started here, the need for this type of service has become abundantly clear to me, all right? I come from an area where a 20 minute transport time, I'm at a level on trauma side, all right? Not at a critical access hospital that we need to treat as another 911 scene to get them to that higher level of care, to continue their care, all right? We need to build this service to the proper levels to cover this 732 square miles of Cheshire County, Swansea being at the center of that and our largest call volume so far of we're here for you, we'll continue to be here for you, and we want to provide the best care we have, we can. So please provide us with your feedback, let me know if there are issues. I've reached out to Chief Mattson a few times, I had a few good conversations with him. I believe that rapport and relationship is building, all right? If he says something else, then that's fine. But, you know, our crews want to be there to help people, hands down, and we'll work with the county to figure out the financial aspects, but our crews will tighten up so that we are able to build as much as the insurance will reimburse us for, so that we can continue to provide this care.
We take it in every time.
That was a great presentation. It was fantastic. You taught us a lot.
Taught me a lot.
Yeah. A lot to learn, that was great.
So you guys all are in that building?
We are.
We're there. The old cordash.
The old cordash?
Swing by anytime, we're in there.
Yeah, if you have to see the building, do, do, do take a look, look in the ambulance and look inside, particularly proven.
It's, it's yours if you're down, so you might as well swing by it, you get a whole couple of.
Coincidence, we have the most calls when you put the building right now down.
Yeah, to be honest with you, as we're looking at some of the sites that we're looking, they're closer to Keen and it was nothing, nothing with Keen, what we also love is they have a traffic flow and you get out to another site, but made it a little bit more difficult. I happened, and I, well, Jack actually looked at me and said, what about the Strongman? Strongman building? And I grew up with the Strongman, so he reached out to him and I think probably told me on the phone. And so, you know, it was, we were able to, we were able to work out the situation.
And, and, and not that it matters to them, like the building wasn't for sale. We walked up to the door.
He gave you a non-fully good review.
Do you want to sell? And they said, okay. I said, I'm not sure enough. And he said, well, let me think about it. I thought about it, came back to the price, I said, okay. But that was it.
But before we thought about it, if you need to go to Fitzroy, Detroit, Harrisville, Long Island, everything's right there and, and to be able, and to be able to get on the highway to go to Sardar, even, I mean, guys, tell me if it's not true, we've had, we've had feedback in Sardar, we're getting there faster than anybody has in the past. We only know that because they're, they're telling us that. And so, you know, it's, it's a good, I think it's a great site to be at. And over time, when we are able to, if we have substations to be close to some of the other communities, that's something we can look at, you know, down the road, but we're not really.
But you do see in the future, you're going to need more of a building.
Yeah.
And you've got an ambulance outside, right? You have six days and seven ambulances?
Well, one of our, we have one of our ambulances up at Maplewood.
Oh, yeah. We've got some bargains up there when you meet the nursing.
And sleeping quarters up there too.
Yeah, there's some aids in there, one year and a half, I'll put it.
Thank you.
Deputy, do you have? Something with the training too, as far as like the CPR that we're providing with our community outreach, the vast majority of our CPR classes are actually being instructed by paramedics. We hit on, you know, the different levels of provider and just the importance to recognize that not all even CPR classes are created equal, but they have a seasoned higher level of care, teaching that information, there's, there's a lot of that. Our onboard process is now a week of information, you know, some of that information, you saw those hotspots, we're making sure that our new employees that are coming onboard are aware of how it gets to those locations the best way. You guys have these beautiful couple bridges that some of our ambulances have to avoid. I need to make sure that. I need to make sure that an individual coming from the state of Vermont, the state of Massachusetts understands that, um, and isn't just falling on the blue line. So, we've worked really hard to, to do that. Um, we've all, uh, you know, we, we hold our daily trains with our crews, uh, monthly trains, and now, we said, we have a, a vulnerability simulator, we'll be able to recreate an entire call of any sort of aspect that's built into a machine, and they have to address that in a, in a safe environment. Uh, so, yeah, thank you for the time, it's nice to meet you.
Nice job.
Just real quick, we're working, um, what's the best effect? I didn't hear what you think, there's a great, great, here with any, I wouldn't need this, the great, 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 yeah, great work is, but where we're at with current staff models, wherever, we have that in place, but we're backing ourselves up.
You know, I think the thing that, back, I always want to call you, everybody wants, but we've got more ambulances than twenty-four seven, than we've ever had.
Ever.
Keane and Dulusio combined. So, the concept of backup is relevant very often.
Because we're staffed with what this, this county needs for ambulances.
What we need though, we know, we pretty much know, we, we, we're, we're, we're distance, we can call ahead of time, we can slide over the string and...
They come right, and they come right there, and they've done that, um, ten, four times.
Yeah.
We've got seventeen paramedics.
But, you know, with five ambulances, that, like I say, that's more than Dulusio at, at their peak, when they're, at their lowest point, they're only at two or three or two and a half. Keane's got two, two and a half. So, um, the, the need for backup is nowhere near what it used to be, just because of, of the crew we settled into and the need we saw in the new rebuild.
You have the backup.
Backup.
You hear they moved you out of your district?
I know.
You can run for it anyway, right? Treasure, you wouldn't get that, did you?
Yeah, we're close.
Have you picked a successor yet? Sure. Yeah, right. You're not backing them up then?
Yes, we backed them up.
Well, I don't think that's fair.
We've been like fifteen...
Yeah. I don't think that's fair.
Yeah.
But believe that.
I don't see Texas on that. That's a mall.
Another thing, probably, Mr. Key. Mr. Key, my father, brother, sister, they called me by Mr. Key. So, you brought back loving memories, when you said that, I kind of thought a little bit what you did to my father.
Love the club is too much.
That was beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
Did we ever mean like a shooter or just, uh, reset? I didn't delete.
I was just, I wasn't there on your field.
Jesus. Yeah, well, first one, that's...
This new guy's, uh, making the meetings longer.
Hey.
I didn't ask that. So, you did not all, you did not all, Mr. Key.
I know now to hide my kids from you. You're right. I know to hide in the kitchen when you come in.
Yeah.
Back to order. Um, so we, I think we got through pretty much everything on the agenda. I just handed out a letter for the board's consideration. We're trying to put together a, uh, request for congressionally directed spending for the West Swansea Water Company project that we talked about earlier, earlier this year. The board was adamant that they wanted us to pursue all opportunities, so this is one, uh, Underwood and I have pulled together at the eleventh hour, but, uh, so I put a copy of the letter in front of you. I've talked to Ginberg Properties about a letter of support in the Greater Menadoc Chamber, so we'll be able to put together an application for some, hopefully, some funding.
Great. You want us to sign all of these, or do you want us to...
That would be great, yeah, if you could, that'd be great. If there's any questions.
Any follow-up on the, uh, election you wanna go over?
I just wanna mention that we put out an RFQ last week, request for qualifications for the wastewater treatment plant study, um, so we'll hope to get applicant, uh, submissions back in April and get someone working on that ASAP.
Wastewater, uh, issue.
Are you gonna give us a new rules of procedure to sign, or is that signing to authorize it so we don't...
We don't have public care, actually.
Yeah.
So, we make a motion to move out of the public meeting, is that what I'm supposed to do?
No, we're gonna go into non-public?
That's...
Yeah.
To move into non-public? Should I make a motion that we want to...
I'm there.
Oh, under A?
Great. So, I make a motion to move into non-public meeting under A?
Yeah. Second. Motion made and seconded.
Uh, Walker, Karazinski?
Shut us off there, young, young fellow.